Oh, uh, what about the sales tax bill? I don't know. I don't think it's on our agenda, but what do you see happening with that? Ryan or Phil?
Yeah, what I've been hearing is that there's a lot of mixed emotions about it, that it might be tied up into one of those big. One, it's being dubbed the sales tax, which I don't think anybody has the political. They don't want to move bills that are called sales tax in Oregon. And so there's conversations already if that move forward of people trying to refer that back to the ballot. But at the same time, because it's related to healthcare, I think it's charging. It's getting people riled up a little bit more as well. So I'm not seeing it move, but it's definitely within a committee that doesn't, isn't subject to the deadlines at this point.
I mean, I've been surprised at the people that have told me about it that are very aware of it. And, and you know, people in our community that are like, oh, my gosh. So, all right, so it doesn't have deadlines. All right. Thank you. So Laura, is he on now?
I'm here.
Oh, good. Thank you, Commissioner Chang. So I don't know, Ryan, did you want to say something to start off or are we going to go with Phil Shores?
Sure, I could get us started. So last night we hit something that is called the Chamber of Origin or the first part of the Chamber of Origin deadline. So just like in a long session, we have first chamber deadlines and second chamber deadlines, and they both consist of two parts. So there's a posting deadline where bills have to be posted on an agenda and then by last night. So by midnight last night, anything that was not posted on an agenda to move out of committee by the end of this week, Friday's the deadline for bills that have to move out of committee. And that's the second part of the Chamber of Origin deadline. If you didn't get posted by last night, the bill's dead. If you didn't get, if you don't get moved out of committee by Friday, your bill's dead. There are some exceptions to that always. You know, the presiding officers have the ability to introduce bills anytime they want through the Rules Committee. There are two or three committees that have a, on each side that have an exemption from the deadlines, Revenue Committee being one of them. And so I did just run the numbers. I always like to talk, to put things in context for people to understand what we're dealing with down there. So with the start of the session, every legislator had two bills. That's ninety, so one hundred and eighty total. And then each of the committees had three bill introductions. So twenty-five committees, about another seventy-five on top of that. Add budget bills into that, and you're looking at roughly two hundred and seventy-five to three hundred bills total for a six-week session. So we were thinking and hoping that, in many cases, hoping that we'd see a big drop-off after last night of things that did not make it through the first chamber posting deadline. But what we saw, and I haven't made it through the House yet, but I have ran the numbers in the Senate, and out of the one hundred bills that were introduced with Senate bills, seventy of them have either already been moved out of committee or are still remaining on agendas to potentially move out of committee by the end of the week. So thirty percent of the bills have dropped off in the Senate and seventy percent are still alive. So Phil, that'll, that'll cover my general report for now.
Thank you.
All right. And so Commissioners, I was thinking, I do believe we have Senator Knop joining here in probably ten minutes. Although if you folks just want, I know he's on a tight timeline today too. So do you just want me to start going through the look ahead calendar? And then when we see him pop on, just kind of freeze, pause, jump to him and then come right back? Is that the best process for you folks?
The very best. Thank you.
All right.
And I would just, Phil, before you get rolling in that note, that the report that the board has just includes recommended priority and position from departments. And the board has not had a chance yet to weigh in on those recommendations and finalize the board's priority and position. So as we go through bills, I would just ask, it would be helpful for staff if the board can, where it's possible, let us know if you'd like to make an adjustment to the recommendation, and we'll note those and lock those into the system. And then moving forward, as we do look aheads, you'll know that you've reviewed staff's recommendations. So just a quick housekeeping item there.
And if I could add on to what Whitney just said, I believe on this look ahead calendar, that includes them all. In the future, moving forward, once we have all of those priorities, we will only be putting priorities one, two, and threes on this look ahead calendar. Right now, it looks very robust because one, it was a deadline week. And then two, once we just get those priorities set, then fours and fives will drop off and we'll not include them anymore. So if I read off a bill and you folks know it's already four or five, just tell me and I will mark it right on my side and we can just move on. So. Perfect. All right, the first one might be one of those. So I, we had some public hearings and work sessions yesterday. For the sake of time, I'm just moving forward with what's occurring today and, and looking forward. The first one was this morning, House Bill four zero two seven. Now, this one is on the list because it had a clarification that prohibits or limits a local government's regulation authority. It's specifically tied to non-residential alarm systems and battery, battery charged fences. So it might not be the top priority for Oregonians right now, but it did have a public hearing. The only for people that showed up for that this morning at eight o'clock was two security firms. And really, they're not prohibiting it. They're just trying to say you can't use a battery of no more than twelve volts. Regulation similar to that. You can't prohibit height limits. And again, it is just for non-residential alarm systems. There can be restrictions or ordinances passed at the local government level for the residential ones still. But they kept this very centered on for instance, industrial parks, things like that.
Commissioners, just to tag team here, coming out of community development, this is recommended as a priority four. So likely at least staff recommendation not to have a huge impact.
All right.
And that did. Real quick, just for clarity. So is that referring to electric fences? Is that the key to this whole thing?
Yeah, specifically is a battery charged electric fences. And then that they can't have a battery no more than twelve volts meets the energized characteristics from the, and it's the International Electrical Technitional Commission, the IEC. And so they set standards. They're trying to have a uniform standard. That's what some of the testimony was about. And this would just keep. And then also by not putting additional regulations on surrounded areas for non-electrical program differences around it. So again, these are all being brought forward by that IEC. The two companies that came forward and testified are members of that. And the conversation was this keeps us consistent with other states. Washington did something very similar in their last legislative session. So.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. On. All right, I'm going to move to the next one, which was a big conversation this morning. This is the Governor's Workforce Development Bill that was heard in the Senate. They, at the last minute, published a dash two amendment which replaces the bill. It expanded the definition of priority population. This workforce bill, I believe, you might have already, Commissioners, you might have already heard from Leah Horn, the Governor's person for workforce and infrastructure now. She has been visiting with local governments, I believe at LLC and AOC about the, what they're intended for this bill and trying to get support for it. It's making large investments in workforce development through HECC. It effectively sets up multiple grants, appropriates millions of dollars into those grants. But it allows, they can only be used or allocated from HECC for the priority population. The dash two is what replaced the bill. And the big change in there is the definition of priority population now means communities of color, women, low-income communities, rural and frontier communities, veterans, people with disabilities, incarcerated or formerly incarcerated individuals, members of the nine recognized, federal really recognized tribes, and individuals that have been disproportionately experienced discrimination in employment. So they broadened it quite a bit. It was a narrower, but that was a good part of the conversation this morning. And I'm in the process of breaking this down by a couple people's requests of which each, which each allocation and which grant programs are being set up in this. And specifically, if there's any details within the bill, which I'm guessing there's not, that how is the process going to work to get these funds allocated into those communities? As of right now, they've been very high level and vague proposals of this grant for these communities at this funding level. And then very limit, very loose guidelines on what they want to achieve for that. I think a lot of the questions we're hearing is how's it going to be implemented? Is there going to be a metric to make sure that these funds are distributed equally across these communities? Things like that. And that was not spoken to quite this morning. So I am in the process of breaking down this bill into sections, if that's helpful for you folks. But it is one that's going to be, hey, we're having another public hearing and possible work session later. Either this week or, oh, actually, it's on, I believe it's the fourteenth. I can double check that and get that to you as well. So it had its first one and it will continue to move forward. This is at the request of the Governor's Office. And so it is, it's on its way. So I'm going to pause there if there's any questions on that bill.
And this is coming with a staff recommendation of support to out of health services.
What's the bill number? Did you, I'm sure you started off there.
Fifteen, fifteen forty-five. And it will be the dash two or the A engrossed coming out of committee, no longer the original bill. All right.
Are we confirming position? Is that what you're looking for, Whitney, for the three Commissioners?
It would be helpful, and I think Tom Kuhn is off mute and can provide some potentially additional context if you want to, Tom.
Yes. Hello, Tom Kuhn from Public Health. We are recommending a priority two support for this as we've been experiencing some really great difficulties in workforce recruitment and just helping develop a public health and behavioral health workforce in the upcoming years is critical for us to get more applicants when we have positions posted, to draw from a better pool of applicants and get the highest quality possible candidates we can get. Because often now, we're lucky if we get maybe three candidates applying to positions that in the past we would have gotten over twenty. So I think this is really important going into the future.
Well, so, you know, I'm excited about, you know, the future, you know, workforce development. For a generation, I see Senator Knop, thanks for joining us. For a generation, it's been, you know, go to college, go to college. And I think there's absolutely that path available, just like we've been talking about apprenticeships and all kinds of work experience programs. So yeah, anything down these lines is, is going to be enthusiastically supported to get the next generation of employees on track.
Thank you. Phil, did you want to then recognize Senator Knop?
Absolutely. We will pause where we're at, and Senator Knop has joined. He is, he obviously has served as Deshues County Senator for a good portion of, a good time. And happy to have him here. He's also now our Senate Republican Leader. And so we've, as the board has requested, we've invited him to come and provide a legislative update just on things he's hearing, how he's feeling the tone of sessions going, and anything else that he feels he would like to visit about. And so that is it. He is, and I would just like to note too, his, he and his office have been remarkably helpful as we have been trying to, not just this session and previous sessions, track down bills, see where things are going on behind the scenes in public. As you folks know, the last couple sessions have not been normal with COVID. But having our, our ability to reach out to the Senator and have him help navigate things when the public's not fully assess, available to be in the building has been tremendously helpful. And so I guess we would just like to thank you, Senator, for that help.
So a quick introduction also, so this is our legislative meeting of Deshues County. You can see there's department heads, all kinds of folks on here. You might know some, maybe not, but this is kind of the administrative leadership of Deshues County taking the positions on the bills that are happening out there. So thanks for joining us, Senator.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Phil. And Commissioners Dare and Chang, it is an honor to be with you. I haven't been in a room with this many VIPs in quite a while. I got all the department heads here. They look all excited to be on yet one more Zoom call with a politician. I got great news though. I'm a statesman, not a politician, so we're all good there. Thank you, Commissioner Chang, for your letter on the forestry bill. I got some great input. We got staff working to try to include those items to the degree that we can in this bill. One of the issues with the short session, obviously, is times of the essence and things are moving very rapidly. But we're going to, we're going to do our best because I liked a lot of what you had to say. So it's super helpful. Commissioner DeBon, of course, thanks for stopping by. Was that yesterday? I lose track of time. Yeah, man, you're already back in Bend?
That was yesterday, yes.
You got a, you got a flying DeLorean that you bought with county money that you need to.
No, no, no. I got up early and drove back this morning, though.
Okay, well, that's good. That's what I do too.
Yep.
The, I could just tell you at five AM, the police aren't on the road yet. So I was just saying. So, but take it easy. So, I mean, the session is kind of interesting. I mean, it's really heating up. We got lots of big issues. We got fought farm, farm worker overtime is what it's called. Some people call it ag overtime. Same thing. Focus obviously is on what can be done to provide, you know, better compensation for a very difficult job. And also stay competitive with the outside markets. So our producers, our growers, whether it's berries, vegetables, trees, what have you, wheat, compete on a very national and global scale. And so we have to be able to be competitive as well. So trying to come up with a bill that everyone likes, might be difficult. But we are continuing to work on it. There's a hearing this evening. If you would like to spend several hours of your evening, I think at five thirty in-house business and labor, you can tune in to get one more online meeting. And you'll hear a lot of testimony on that. I will be tuned in. I will not be part of the hearing because it's a house hearing. So I mentioned the forest treatment thinning bill. Also, we are trying to get going. Another issue is really what we can do to support law enforcement to be able to get a handle on especially illegal marijuana grows cartel involvement. Many of you obviously saw the headlines. I think it was last fall, it feels like, on the cartel operation that was shut down in Deshues County. We need to stay on top of that. Unfortunately, there seems to be a bit of a stronghold down in Southern Oregon right now. And it's just out of control. And so we have to find a way to provide law enforcement resources necessary to deal with that, combat that. As I told the committee chair yesterday, being the uniter that I am, I have understood in the short session that it may be necessary to pursue a general fund appropriation for the necessary money. So this is where I am headed currently. We could talk about measure one ten and its distribution in the twenty-three session. We just do not have time to do that in the short session. But I believe measure one ten displaced some county and city and law enforcement money. And I'm all in favor and support of mental health treatment and addiction treatment. Because I believe that we have to invest there in order to make sure that people are getting the help that they need. Because we all know that our homeless populations are struggling with some of those addictions as well. Obviously, not everybody, but I, it feels like in the studies that I've seen, there's a majority, if not a strong majority, who have some addiction issues that if aren't resolved, likely won't resolve their homelessness, no matter what we do. So we have to be working on this at a pretty holistic level. Appreciate the county's efforts in trying to deal with the homeless issue. It's, it's a tough issue statewide. I can tell you that all over the metro area, Salem, Eugene, I traveled a lot during redistricting. Several, probably, I don't know, two, three thousand miles at least. And drove all over the state, was in nearly every district. And the one common theme popping up, especially as you got into more metro areas, was the homelessness issue. And virtually all the communities looked the same. What you see out on Huddle Road, what you see in other parts of the city and county are very similar to what you'd see anywhere in the state. And so this is a statewide problem, needs to be resolved. But I appreciate the county trying to weigh in and do what they, do what y'all can in pretty difficult circumstances there. What else can I talk about that you would even care about? I don't know. Questions? Answers? Anybody?
Um, Commissioner, Senator Knop, it's Commissioner Dare. I'm wondering the fifteen seventy-three, the Senate bill, do we have the other fifteen eastern Oregon counties then? Is that an amendment that will be added?
Oh, is that what you want?
Is that what I want? Well, that's what I heard was going to happen. I talked to Ben Sunday about it. Because, you know, we discussed it at AOC, and I just wanted to get feedback. And that's, that's what Ben had told me.
Yes, Commissioner, once again, I am a uniter. So we're going to do our best to take care of everybody. Of course, you know, we started out with ten. I would just say that we started with the ten most vulnerable counties as it relates to wildfire, trying to make some big, big progress there. Of course, we also have the wildfire bill and some money from there. But, you know, it seems like everybody wants in on an incredible bill, you know, sponsored by your state senator. So we, you know, we're going to try to work to get everybody there. So Commissioner Dare, I appreciate you advocating for Deshues as well as, you know, the counties as a whole. You know, it's, it's nice to be able to get consensus. But sometimes you have to divide up the pie a little bit more.
Well, I appreciate you adding the other counties because remember I was raised in Hepner and Laurel County. And, yes, so anyway, you know, when you drive across eastern Oregon, you see it, you know. And thinning seems to be one of the big articles that were written up in the bulletin. What was it about a week ago? That huge article on thinning and how eighty percent of some of the forests need to be thinned out? I believe it was California they were referring to. So thank you for being the uniter that you are.
Well, thank you. You guys picked up on that quick. So if the rest of you could all say that in unison, Senator Knop is a uniter, that would be great. No, so the, as you, I mean, as you guys drive around Oregon, you can see that almost any county can be hit by this. East side, you know, Southern Oregon, Central, definitely, definitely vulnerable. Hood River, the Dows, they wanted in on it too. You know, they've had, you know, I think their issues were more on wheatland than it was forests recently, although they had the very incredibly unfortunate fire a few years back. The gorge, but nonetheless, we, we need to do what we can to preserve the assets of Oregon for future generations. And so I appreciate how you're working on that. Big issue, workforce. Governor's got a big workforce plan. They spend all kinds of money on that. And Governor has a lot of, a lot of expenditures. She had Business Oregon, she had infrastructure. I think that was like fifty million and forty million. I did ask if all that was going to be spent in Deshues County or if other counties were going to be able to get a piece of that too. Apparently, other counties are going to get a piece of it. I don't know why, but ninety million dollars would have sounded great to me for Deshues County. But we're going to share, once again, uniter. That's the way it works in the short session. You got to be, you know, you got to work collaboratively. So that's what we're trying to do. But, you know, the workforce package probably goes, I mean, we got some concerns about it. You know, how quickly, because basically, I think I heard somebody saying something about you know, they had a few candidates, but normally they'd have a whole lot more. That is everywhere, and I think you guys know that. So the labor shortage is, it's an emergency. So we need to get people back to work and fill those jobs now. And it's an emergency in healthcare. It's an emergency in, you know, retail operations. How many times have you guys tried to go out to your favorite restaurant recently? And it normally it would be open and it's closed, you know? It's closed two days a week because they can't find anybody to work. And so the workforce issue, whether it's construction or healthcare or technology, automotive, what have you, definitely huge problem. So the whole legislature is trying to work with the governor, solve that. We had that bill in labor this morning. It'll probably move out on Thursday. I'm not sure I'll vote for it out of committee yet. It's going to go down the ways and means, get another whack at it. But I'm supportive of the overall concept and hopefully trying to work out enough details to, again, make it bipartisan, make people happy. Other questions?
Senator Knop, I also wanted to add, you know, with the marijuana issue, that I was listening to Commissioner DeGroot from Clamath County, and he was saying that they were having, they were having to spend all kinds of crazy money down there too. You know, we had the forty-nine greenhouses here by Alfalfa. But truly, it's in nine counties. It's, it's, it's a mess. So whatever, hopefully some of those bills will get through. And thank you for that this morning.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, it's, it's spreading. I mean, that's the point of the emergency, is that you have to get on top of it with very aggressively. And we got the grow season, you know, the big grow season coming up. And you got to get on top of it right now. And you got to have the resources and law enforcement necessary. You know, you've got to have, you got to have DA, you got to have defenders, you got to have resources in place for people who are being trafficked. And, you know, it's, it's a big, big problem. And so it is an emergency. We're working on it. Appreciate Commissioner, you bringing that up. And, you know, to the degree that we can keep it out of Deshues County, we want to do that as well. So.
We've got a property owner that recently I got in contact with, and he leased out a property, probably illegal activity, but not confirmed last summer. But now he's been, it's been abandoned, and he's got an environmental disaster on his hand. And this is prime farmland with COID water on it. But he's not going to be able to even plant and utilize his property unless he gets that mess cleaned up. And the people that leased it are long gone. So I think that was a point in time last year. The reality of the situation is there's a lot of pressure on these illegal coordinated grows. But we cannot let this keep happening.
No, we, we most certainly can't. Well, Nick Leelak, what, what keeps you up at night that I can help you with at the state level?
Well, thanks, Senator. A lot of things keep me up at night. But, you know, right now, we're looking forward to tomorrow morning with the Collaborative Housing Office bill. That's certainly a big one. Our new community development director, Peter Gatawski, and I right now are just coordinating to make sure that we have the legislative fix for the accessory dwelling unit bill so that that, that can be, can be fixed. And so we're just trying to figure out what, what bill number that provision is in, just given that that housing is so important to, to our county, among others. Certainly, facility. Certainly, facility funding for our courthouse and a lot of other projects that we mentioned. Just given we've got a lot of big demands in our county, as you well know, so thanks so much for your help and great discussion this morning.
Well, I feel like I was talking the whole time, Nick, so I, I hope it was a discussion, but thank you. Yeah, let's, let's keep working on those financial issues because I, I know, you know, the growth of the county unprecedented, right? I mean, so we gotta keep up with the, all the needs that exist and are ever expanding. So I really appreciate all your efforts because, you know, when things are static and, you know, you don't, you know, you don't have to worry too much about too few streets and too few sewers and too few law enforcement and all that. That's one thing, obviously, if you're, you know, losing your timber resources, it's pretty tough. Like Josephine County has, you know, and so they've been pretty decimated by that financially. But financial decimation can happen with growth as well and trying to keep up with infrastructure and everything that needs to happen, whether that's mental health resources or, or what have you. And so, and then I noticed we got more than ten people on the screen, which means that one of you has COVID. Because one in ten people in the shoots county right now has COVID, so thank goodness we're on Zoom right now. You may not even know you have it, so, you know, you probably, we should probably all get tested. But this is a big issue everywhere, the Capitol. We're out five or six senators right now, I think we're out at least six senators because of health issues right now. And, you know, so we're, you know, we're four senator, five senators away from not even having a quorum because of COVID, so it's a, it's a big issue, I'm sure it's impacted the county as well. But literally, one in ten shoots county residents, that's, that's pretty amazing. So when you go to the grocery store or wherever, you know, you're looking around going, wow. It's tough and everybody's been affected by it. And so hopefully we can get through this and get to a more endemic stage of this virus and get back to more normal operations. But thank you guys for all working through what is a very difficult time for our county and our state and, you know, country and the world, really, so. And, you know, I, I know people are a little tense and so I've gotten a whole lot funnier over the, you know, last few months. I've been working on my stuff, it's good stuff. So, you know, we'll see how it goes. I don't know, I think some of my colleagues are getting weary of me, but overall, I think we're, I think we're getting along. Keeping those relationships going and trying to help each other out. So that's kind of where things are at right now. Your lobby team does a great job keeping us informed and letting us know, definitely give me an update on where that accessory dwelling fix is because I, I'm not sure which bill it's in either. And so I wanna be keeping track of that and making sure that we got that on our list of, of things that we wanna, you know, get through, so appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll do so for sure, thank you.
Senator Knopf, we'd ask for like five point two million for several important projects in the shoots county. And one of them was three million, Lapine Community Health Center, which was open all during COVID. Has a plan going that they'd ask us for some help with, so please don't let that one follow through. I, I wanted to ask for four million and I got over, I got voted over, but at least, really, Lapine has such a huge draw and we need more healthcare on this side of the mountain. So if those can be watched, that would be great. And cover the line.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that you guys jumped into action there. We got a lot of, we got a lot of emails, so I think from Whitney and some submissions and all that. You guys just did great getting that stuff in. I honestly don't, I know there's, in terms of bonding projects, I know there's not a lot of money available. But then we, we don't know what the negotiation's gonna be in terms of general fund and what might happen there. But I'll just say that the shoots county was well represented in the amount and number of projects that were submitted. So I would think just, you know, just on the fact that we got so many that we'll get some. I know we won't get all of it, but if they're, you know, I'm hoping they don't just say, oh. I've seen partial lists and it's a lot of money. So adds a lot of projects and a lot of money. So I hope they don't give up on just not fund anything but this short session because it, it's hard to, after a long session where a lot of money was spent. And there's a big, big project called CAMHS three. And if you don't know what CAMHS three is, that is the third phase of the earthquake proofing of the Capitol. And it is Peter Courtney's number one, a legacy priority. I heard, I asked him how much it was and I, I'm pretty sure I misheard him because he, I think he said three hundred and eighty-nine million. I was like, get the paddles out, you're gonna need to revive me. Because I think I was told at the beginning of this whole thing a few years ago, the whole project was supposed to cost three hundred million, but maybe I got, maybe I heard that wrong too. But it's like, man alive, that is a lot of money. So the Capitol is under construction perpetually now because of that. And we are back in our offices, you can see the very decorative bookshelf done by the Corrections Employees years ago. They, Correction Industries did all these bookcases and things like that. So when you see one like this, it means that we're in, in our office or we're fancy enough to be able to put that picture up for a background. I am not that fancy, so you get what you get. It looks like you get about half my head is what it looks like. But there we go, you got the whole head in there. Anyway, so we are a little concerned at that, how much bandwidth that might take in projects as relates to the state Capitol. But, I mean, we're, well, I mean, we're years into this project now. And so I don't think we're gonna walk away from it. So the question is, is what, you know, what kind of resources, what kind of bonds, all that? And, you know, where's the money come from? Is it ARPA, is it a general fund, is it bonds, is it a combination? And so the president's pretty committed to that.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Chang, did you have a question?
Yeah, Senator, if I could just circle back to fifteen seventy-three. Thank you again so much for your attention to wildfire concerns throughout our state and particularly here in the home county. And for, you know, sponsoring this bill and the I, I, I'm seeing in the amendment that I, a whole bunch of additional counties were added and, and thank you for doing that. I, that was the overwhelming response when we were processing this at the AOC Natural Resources Committee the other day. From the shoots county perspective, my, my two lingering questions, concerns, which, you know, Ben said, yeah, I think so. But like, I didn't get like a, I wasn't, it wasn't, you know, a hundred percent certain. Were, number one, the question of whether the, once the, the dollars are transferred to the county, whether we will be able to hold them beyond the end of the biennium. And two, whether we would be able to use these funds for site prep and unit layout and, and, and planning work, you know, the things that you need in addition to implementation dollars. And if, if it's possible to get us a, like a firm answer back on those two questions sometime before that, that the bill, you know, comes to, you know, comes to a vote or, you know, it goes through its committees. I would love to, you know, if, if, if we can say yes on both of those things, I would love to be able to come and give testimony in support.
I'll work on that, I'll talk to Ben. It is nice to have specific language that is easy to understand and tells you exactly what you wanna know. But sometimes we have to rely on LC's interpretation of what they've written. So we'll try to get it a little more specific for you and find out if you can hold that money past the end of the biennium. It's an excellent question. And so we'll, we'll get answers for you on that.
Thank you. And, and just again, thank you for your, your focus and attention on, you know, a really important statewide issue as well.
Yeah, it's coming clearly a significant issue for the entire state, especially the shoots county. Since you all live there, as do I. And I've lived there a long time, forty plus years. I, you know, we can't keep having these summers where you can barely go outside and you miss the beauty of the whole region. And the health impacts are significant and there, you know, I, I'm impacted health-wise because I have asthma and some other issues and there are people who are way more impacted than I am. And so, you know, we need to make sure that we're being as responsible as we can be from keeping those health, forests healthy around us as, as best we can. Because, you know, we wanna get back to the time where you have all that summer opportunity for recreation and outdoor activity and, you know, climbing and hiking and, you know, boating and whatever else people love to do. And of course, fishing. And I'll tell you, it's been challenging the last few summers, as you guys know. And so we gotta bring it into that, we cannot keep going on that. And so I know there's obviously a whole spectrum of issues, climate related and otherwise. But we have to do what we can in terms of forest health that we can actually have an impact on, that impacts our citizens' ability to have a healthy lifestyle here in central Oregon. Because that is why a lot of people like to live and work here and, and recreate here. So, you know, we, this is a joint thing, the shoots county has done well working with the Nature Conservancy and other organizations to, you know, do projects and, and thin things out. But, you know, there's a long way to go all across the state and, you know, even in our county, we can, we can do more and and we should, so we're happy to partner with you on, on that and, and other things as well.
Thank you.
Well, Senator Knopf, we've taken up quite a bit of your time this morning. Are there any other questions? I'm sure you have some important things to get back to. Phil, did you have anything else that we should touch base with Senator Knopf on this?
Not at this time, but I'm sure something will pop up at some point.
Great, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you guys, thank you for your work, appreciate it and I'm sure we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Right, Commissioners, would you like me to start breezing through the remainder of our list?
Breezing is a good word, yes.
All right. I think we were at Ford, House Bill four zero seven one, which is up to a public hearing today related to mental health. This is gonna be connected into another bill later because it's stemming from the same report that OHA did to help broaden and increase behavioral health and mental health access to rural communities. Four zero seven one specifically modifies criteria for financial incentives in the behavioral self, health system. Specifically, it creates a new category for a licensed, category of licensed marriage and family therapist and professional counselors and has a reference as an associate. And then it defines what that associate is, which is an individual working towards licensure and registered with a post-degree supervision clinic experience, clinical experience. Effectively, from the conversations that we saw in the paperwork, this is just allowing us to have more people in the shoot to help help folks get access to care. Currently, I believe they have to get all the way through that process, but now they would be able to apply as an associate and be able to help with the pent-up demand of services. And I would pause there to see if our, Whitney or our departments have anything else to add to that.
Janice, do you wanna, nope, yeah.
He summed it up accurately, it's pretty straightforward.
But it says no priority on our, on our list, is that true?
I think we're really selective about what we highlight for priority. This is probably one that'll just go through because it's a kind of administrative fix, so that's why it's not prioritized.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next one would be four zero eight two, and this is just directing, it does have an amendment, the dash ones that will be heard and it will replace the original measure, nothing dramatic in changing of the measure, it just does some legal ease corrections and it also helps unify us with the federal VA system. Effectively, this directs the county governing boards to Designated Veterans Remains Coordinator and then specifies some duties or outlines responsibilities of the county veteran service officers in that process. I know I'm probably not doing the bill justice in, but just trying to move along a little bit quicker. But that does have a work session scheduled and it does look like they are going to be adopting those dash one amendments.
And this was discussed at AOC yesterday in the, the group proper. And it was just mentioned that in, in counties that puts any efforts into this, there's, you know, they'll find that there's a set of remains or a set of activity, but then it's just a spike of activity that'll drop off after you do it first time also.
Miss Bill is coming with a staff recommendation of support three, so if that feels comfortable to the board.
Yes.
So on the sheet here, it says no priority, Whitney, so that needs.
Commissioner, there sometimes we'll send the same bill to multiple departments. And what the summary report will sometimes do is it'll reflect if a department hasn't responded to that request. It kind of overrides the initial review that was conducted and we did have staff weigh in with a recommendation of support three, but it looks like it might have gotten, I did send this one out twice. So it looks like it might have pulled the second request in for you on that report.
Okay.
Um, and Commissioners, I apologize about this next one, this is a, a one that's gonna be a contentious bill again this session, Senate Bill one five three four. It has a public hearing only today at one PM. This is related to biological carbon sequestration, which it sounds like an important bill, it is an important bill. However, they have not posted any paperwork, amendments, staff measure summaries or anything. And I literally just refreshed the page to check again and nothing is still posted. All I know is that there will be a gut and stuff amendment to this bill, but it has not been released. The, the work groups working on it with the governor's office has not released anything. So, and that is scheduled for one o'clock today. They've been on these contentious bills. Usually you see L Pro starting to post things about an hour before the hearing. It can go all the way up to right as the hearing starts as well. But I just don't have any information of what that gut and stuff amendment's looking like at this point. So, but it is scheduled just for a public hearing and then it is, it, there are conversations of moving this bill. It just might end up going to ways and means or rules so that they cannot, conversations and deliberations can continue.
Thanks, Phil and Commissioners, this is a bill, Commissioner Chang, I'll definitely, that we're tracking. Commissioner Chang had flagged this and as we did in the last session, when one of you flags a bill individually, we track it without position or priority associated with it so that you can discuss it a group, as a group in this meeting. So Commissioner Chang, I'll turn it over to you.
Hi. There was a lot of discussion about this bill in the, I can't even remember which AOC steering committee it was the other day. But, you know, there wasn't a whole lot of support. And, you know, if, if people don't like the bill as written, then I, you know, I'm not gonna push back on that. But at the higher level, my, my big concern here is that we've just, we're, we're seeing the executive order, the climate, the climate protection plan form up. They left out carbon sequestration. So you're, we're basically, you're not allowed to take that money that we're collecting from carbon emitters and invest that in carbon sequestration projects right now. And I think we should be able to do that and, and this bill, I believe, you know, the, you know, whether it's designed well, the bill is written well or not, the intention is The intention is basically to get us the information we need to be able to incentivize farmers and forest landowners to, you know, optimize management of their, their land, you know, do regenerative agriculture, you know, do restoration forestry, things like that. To be able to, you know, sequester more carbon on the landscape. And so to the extent that there's opportunities for us to realize that goal, you know, to, to create a flow of funds to, to landowners and land managers in Deschutes County for those purposes, I, I'd like to see that move forward. But, you know, this is, you know, how much, how much we can involve, we, we can get engaged in a complicated bill that seems to be sort of a moving target during a short session. I don't know.
And I think that that, just to add on to that Commissioner, I think, yeah, what is said in committee today will definitely allow us to know if there's more time for that or not. If they just plan to move it out of the, the policy committee straight, and yeah, it limits the ability to have conversations just for the sake of meeting a deadline. But if they do move it to rules or ways and means, those deadlines are no longer applicable. And then maybe some additional time for engagement if needed is available. But I, it, it will be dependent upon what we see today. So I will keep refreshing the page and as soon as I, I will be reading through those materials as they come available and happy to forward those on to anybody.
Thank you.
But, and it's also, it's valuable. Thank you, Commissioner Chang, for explaining, you know, this is, the, the vision is what projects can be invested in if there's resources. So that's good to understand that big picture here. But yeah, we need to stand by till they get more clarity on what, what the bill is. So it sounds like it could change quite, quite a bit in the near future.
So thank you, Phil, for doing that, keeping us up to date.
No problem. And that, we were, thank you, Whitney and Commissioner for forwarding that, the emails so that I can make sure that stays on our list. So, um, tomorrow is our revenue forecast for the state. And I do want to just note right after that, or about the same time, it's not the same time, that I just have that marked on our calendar as a key deadline right at the beginning of the day. Revenue meets in the afternoon. So if you're looking at the look ahead calendar, the fact that revenue forecast at the top doesn't mean that that proceeds our eight o'clock hearings. Just wanted to note that. But are the first bill that would be of interest is that four zero five one related to housing. I know that this is potentially a vehicle for an amendment to take care of the, our campgrounds issue and maybe potentially the ADU issue from last session. It is just up for a public hearing tomorrow and that it already has a work session scheduled for the following Monday. So it did meet the deadline and it will continue to be alive. I believe this is also a key bill for Representative Fahy, who is now the majority leader. And so we can reach out and be happy to see if there's opportunities there to have some of our issues taken care of. What I do know was they are going to hear conversations tomorrow on the dash three amendments. This will replace the measure completely and it does three main things. One, it's going to extend the sunset of the task force on homelessness and racial disparities to 2026. And then it's going to direct the task force to also work with state agencies to look at what current funding mechanisms are available in housing funds, programs and see from start to finish application through determination, through evaluation of those applications, if things need to be adjusted to make sure that, that they're more reflective of what we're facing as a state today. The second thing is it is, it extends the deadline from July first, 2022 to July first, 2023, for which a local government must approve an application for development of land for an emergency shelter. And it, it still keeps in there that it's subject to terms and conditions provided in the law that was passed previously, 2000, in House Bill 2006. And then the third part is it modifies language to clarify that the local government shall allow affordable housing and may not require a zone change or conditional use permit on property that is owned by a public body or nonprofit corporation or religious corporation, if it's zoned commercial, to allow religious assemblies or public land, or as public land. So there's three main focuses in that amendment. Again, it's, it's, I think there's still time that if we can, are able to visit with Representative Fahy, that there's possibility of having some other technical fixes there. This is not the only relating to housing clause bill, so we do have other avenues. But this is the one that seems to be moving to, and I think that, that's to your point, Commissioner Devon, when we were talking about potentially having this as the vehicle for the campgrounds.
Yeah, and I don't know that there's a specific legislative wording that's even popped up yet. You know, just the concepts that I've been floating around and for Deschutes County proper, you know, opportunity for market rate campground at the perimeter of the town is the, is the concept, you know. So I don't know, is there any way to take this any farther right now or?
Yeah, I think that maybe the next first step is if we have like a sentence or a description that we can say what our goal is and get that to one of our legislators like Tim or Jason or anyone. They could run it by legislative council and see if it fits within the parameters of the bill already. Because it's so broad, just related to housing, it, I'm, it seems like it is a good fit. But we can at least see what legislative council comes back as. And then if it comes back as a negative, I do know legislative council and their system has the ability to say, here's the bills that are left out there alive that this would fit into.
So there's some action that we should be doing here in the next day or two and on that, correct?
Yes, if somebody could help me find the right paragraph description, I'm happy to track down a legislator that's.
I'll send you a couple of emails that, that are popping around here.
If I could, if I could throw in another campground type concepts, which I, I think is actually, I'm not necessarily related to, to what Commissioner Devon is suggesting. The idea has also come up that if we could extend the emergency sighting authority under HB two thousand and six to additional kinds of zones and additional types of facilities, then that would be, you know, one of the ways to achieve essentially authorization of, you know, some of the, you know, some of the land uses that we've been talking about. So I, I'd like to throw that into the mix. If this, if this particular bill is, you know, one of its primary pieces is to extend two thousand, HB two thousand and six. Like if that could include various kinds of tweaks by, you know, allowing emergency sighting of, of homeless shelter in a wider range of zones beyond the, you know, incorporated areas and rural residential zone areas. That could give us some flexibility to do some of the things that, you know, to, to pursue some of the ideas that have been floating around in the community in the last few months as well.
And Phil, to top it off, I had a conversation this morning with the Chair of our Planning Commission and we are both on the same side of the page about manufactured homes. We need workforce housing. Clearly, we need it in Deschutes County. We don't have enough workforce housing. The funding goes to affordable housing with people that aren't working, you know, with low income levels, truly workforce housing. So we were saying, is there anything we can do for manufactured homes to, and I, it's probably not possible, but if there's any way we could get a little pilot project in somewhere, that would be so helpful.
Yeah, um, so there is, um, I don't know if this is the right vehicle, but the very next bill on the list is related to manufacturing and prefabricated structures. So, um, coincidentally, and so, um, so, but let me pause and see if there's any, Whitney, do we have any questions or anything like that on that last bill? Sorry, before.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to clarify, would the board like to designate a priority or position for House Bill four oh five one? Because if we don't, it, it won't necessarily reoccur on your tracking for weeks to come. So I don't know if you wanted to direct staff for what you'd like to see in terms of a potential priority and position for that bill, if you'd like to continue tracking it.
Maybe we could assign to a level two for it and so that we, we keep tracking it. And if it looks like it's a vehicle for some of the things that we want to do, we could, we could bump that up.
I agree.
So potentially a neutral too. Okay. And then before we move forward in the calendar, I did want to just go back to today. It looks like Nick was able to get some information about Senate Bill fifteen thirty three, which may be the vehicle for the rural ADU fix. And so that bill has a hearing scheduled for this afternoon. And I just sent, which is not fair because it was a real time request to review that bill to Peter. So I'll acknowledge that, but I, I don't know if we may want to adopt position on that bill and or monitor or engage with the hearing this afternoon. And then the third was I did just want to do a time check with the board and see if you'd like to continue today's session past our scheduled timer. If you'd like to pick this up at another, another time, so.
Okay, to that last question first, Whitney, if there's a way we could spend just a few more minutes on stuff that we need all the department heads for, that would be great. And then I, I can stay till twelve thirty or twelve forty five, but I don't want to keep everybody on here for, you know, if, if we're not going to be talking about bills that, that relate to their, their subject area.
Commissioner and Whitney, if I can add there, I have three bills left for today. And then actually Thursday, Friday and Mondays are actually duplicates of bills we already talked about. So if that helps with deciding on timing, um, some of the ones we talked about just have public hearings, their work sessions are either Thursday, Friday or Monday. So we don't have to recap, uh, cap, capture those at all. So.
Yeah, let's get to a few more bills today. I have another meeting I could get to, but I can stand by till we're done here.
Yes, let's keep breezing.
Okay. So, um, so the next bill is four zero six four. This is related to prefabricated and manufactured housing. To your point, Commissioner, there, this bill's gonna have an amendment. So we have, they're all coming from Representative Marsh. She is, she is an interesting one to work on to try to get an amendment in the process. And so we are going, I have no problem visiting more with your Commissioner offline to see what that fix might look like. But she is trying to define or modify definitions around prefabricated structures and manufacturing homes. And then this bill specifically clarifies that local governments must allow the sighting of manufactured homes and prefabricated structures in single family dwelling zones inside UGBs and then prohibits local governments from applying standards to those located outside manufactured dwelling parks. That, and it goes a little bit more in depth. It's a very technical bill. I'm happy to get you the staff measure summary on that, Commissioner. But this might be one of those vehicles. I'm happy to ask the question to Representative Marsh. All of the three amendments are being proposed by her. So I'm assuming she is, uh, this is her, her take home bill kind of thing. So I'm happy to track that down if you'd like me to, and then bring it back next meeting.
Please.
All right. The next one, and I'm going to kick to Ryan on the second, this very last one, but I have one in front of there. The one is about building codes and the, which called the reach code. But before then, we do have a bill that's specific to Deschutes County four, one, two, three. And this is related to DAS setting up grants for local governments and nonprofit corporations for the creation of coordinated homeless response centers or systems. They are going to entertain the dash one amendment. This bill specifically gives a million dollars to specific entities to coordinate the, to set these up and coordinate them. But then the one that, the original bill just says one million dollars to Deschutes County or for Deschutes County. The effective dash one amendment expands the name from Deschutes County to, expands name to Deschutes County Coordinated Homeless Response System Partners to include the city of La Pine and city of Sisters. And so I don't know if that affects when we were talking about capital construction projects, if that was, if that maybe affects this. So I just wanted to pause there, this, uh, they have not posted the, the paperwork yet. But that is up for tomorrow and so that should be posted today and I can get that turned around to the folks as well. But I would like to know if that's something we are supporting, if that should be a priority one, two, where should that should be? It is up at eight AM tomorrow in housing for public hearing only.
Uh, so I, you know, I'm in a spot where I'm supporting, you know, I, I don't know that it's our lead bill number one. You know, it's, it's an idea that's bubbling up, partnership, city of Ben, Representative's office. So she's, can I support the support position?
I put a high level of priority on it and, and also be supportive.
Okay.
Yes. So leave it in support. Thank you.
And then as soon as I, they publish that, I will get that turned around to Whitney and the team on the paperwork. So the last big bill I just wanted to cover is one that's becoming a very contentious bill. It had a hearing on Monday or yesterday. It has a possible work session tomorrow. And I imagine this is going to probably be a, a bigger conversation once it gets to the house as well and it's related to reach codes. It was a bill that was controversial in the last session. This is the return version. And I have not been following that like Ryan has, so I'm going to be punting over to him to explain that bill.
I think Ryan just entered notes in the chat that he's having audio difficulties. So maybe we circle back on that one.
Not a problem. And I think we have that included in our end of week report already, or at least flagged to, so, so I'll make sure that the Deschutes one has the construction report we put together. And that'll have a nice summary of that as well. And that is all I have for right now. Again, Thursday, Friday are a lot of repeats. But I'm also happy if anybody wants to reach out to me today. I have one commitment from two to three and outside of that, I can be available by phone to go over any of the remaining bills.
And Phil, you did see that the road department is saying House Bill forty sixty three is an opposed?
Isn't up.
Yes, and it, here it says House Bill forty sixty three is related to housing. So I'm wondering if that's the right number. Is Chris Doney still on?
I'm still on. It's related to housing to the degree that it seeks to speed up permit, the permit process. But there are some provisions that relate to the road department and then the surveyor's office. You were talking about four oh six four. So this, I was just getting my, getting my licks in. It sounded like our meeting might be wrapping up.
Can you explain the, the four zero six three issues a little bit more? You say the road department and surveyor's office?
Yeah, so, so four oh six three has a couple of sections. The first one is kind of this expansive study bill to, to look to, to speed up permitting processes for residential projects. The, the section after that kind of isolates a few things. One of which is allowing for, not allowing for, but requiring permits to be issued prior to plating of lots. And so that creates a lot of concern with the county surveyors regarding the potential for homes and, and other things to be built in the wrong place before, you know, property lines have been officially platted. The second piece of that is that it also requires permits to be issued before paving happens. And so from a, just a public work standpoint, all these homes under construction, while the streets have yet to be paved, seems a little short sighted. We're more concerned about the county surveyor impact because that relates to, you know, all the development that occurs in Deschutes County, not just in the unincorporated area.
We'll reach out to the proponents and see if what they can do to address these concerns.
Yeah, so the AOC is, is, I guess, targeting this one as well. Just, just so you know.
So I did, on the reach code side of things, I did reach out to the Chair and the Committee Administrator for the Committee on, that was handling the reach code issue. And I did just get an up to the minute thing while we were on this call that, that they are drafting an amendment to that bill that will create a work group or a task force that will be looking at what can be done, both in the new, new built environment and the existing building stock to try to adjust energy efficiency and get some, you know, improvements on efficiency for both new construction and existing building stock.
Then Commissioners, we do have other bills that departments have reviewed and provided proposals on in terms of priority and position that we haven't covered today. And I'll defer to the board on how you'd like to handle that. If you'd like to just receive a summary from staff on the call, if there are priority bills that they'd like to engage with you on, or if you'd like us to pull a report that's, you know, inclusive of bills we didn't touch on today and, and review them at our next meeting. It's really at the board's preference.
Okay, so Whitney, we need to know, are those bills going ahead? Because what, we just heard about the Senate bills, are they going ahead for the House? And then can you, can you give us a report really quickly then on it? So we actually are up to date.
I don't know, Commissioner, there, I can try to pull a report out of the system quickly, or I might just ask specifically by department, if departments are aware of priority bills that they're tracking, that they unmute and provide you just an update on what the bill is and what their recommended priority and position is. Would that work?
Sure.
Okay.
How about, how about in particularly if they know that it, it's going to go to a hearing sometime in the next few days before our next legislative update?
Yep, that's great clarification. I'll go ahead and, um, I don't know if folks want to just come off off mute and we'll try to. Take these one by one. So Janice.
Uh, thanks, Whitney. We have one bill that I highlighted as support priority two. It's House Bill four oh oh four. Um, it is a bill that would provide funds to, uh, it. For a short term fix for behavioral health staffing issues specifically, and it would allow for. Retention bonuses and increased compensation for behavioral health workforce. It's really intended to address the crisis in, um, workforce. And I met with Chris Bell with AOC of HP, which supports the bill with other county HR and Afsp staff, all of whom support the bill. Um, and I think it is scheduled for a hearing on Thursday, it looks like. With House Behavioral Health, so it's moving.
See, that's another bill that says no priority on our schedule, so something's not.
Well, it's another bill that got assigned twice for review and the second review is pending. Um, so Janice's review is in, but there's also a pending review in the system, and it looks like when this report got run, it pulled the the pending review.
I I, uh, generally support that idea, but we might want to just stay neutral. That's going to be a budget discussion and, uh, you know, state legislative. In the wrangling about, you know, other resources, is that the right policy to to be supporting that, so. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I guess even if we say support, I I don't think we should put a lot of. Legislative effort into it either, you know.
I I don't have a good understanding of this, but my impression is that they are talking about. Uh, having. Uh, you know, a substantial chunk of funding to to deploy, to expand, uh, out of the short session. Overall for the state, and so I I'd be concerned if we're not. If we're not advocating for the expenditure categories that, you know, are important to us that. Um. You, you know, where we may be missing out on an opportunity to 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 steer more dollars to the things that are more important to us from the state. And, you know, so with that, I would, I would say I I I would like to assign a higher level of priority to this, this item.
I I'd leave it with a two. It's part.
Thank you. Just let me know if there are any questions I can answer going forward. I'm happy to respond.
I did just receive a call from Lane County, and they're asking if Deschutes County would be willing to offer support for an amendment they're working on to a bill. So if it's the right time, let me know when it's the right time. I'd like to. Make that, uh, ask before we get off the line.
Is it a health bill?
No.
Okay. Well, do you want to go ahead and do it right now, Ryan?
Okay, so last session, there was a bill called House Bill twenty eight eighteen. It offered one year extension to, um. The sort of definition of what was considered compensation for to allow employers one year from, uh, to. Offer retention bonuses or new hire bonuses, uh, and have those be exempt from consideration under the pay equity. Law, they're trying to, uh, add one more year to that, and they're asking for, uh, Deschutes County to help support them. And they think we've, for, I don't know where they got the information, but they say we use that process, uh. Ourselves, so.
We do utilize that, um, for both nine one one and health positions specifically. Um, it it's, it's kind of important to have that if we're going to. Bring any type of other bonuses in, so in conjunction with the four oh oh four bill that Janice was referring to. I mean, it's a component. Otherwise, it is considered part of compensation and bonuses. Cause all sorts of issues with pay equity reviews, so it's almost a necessary factor, um, if we're going to consider four oh oh four.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Yeah.
So it sounds like we should support that as well. In in conjunction with, if if we're supporting four zero zero four.
I agree.
Okay. My other thought is, uh, remember, these are the the public jobs, people doing great work for the community, but. It's going to be this escalation out there for wages and the inflation is already shocking, so the more government provides these. Uh, you know, uh, funding, compensation commitments. The the harder it's going to push it, just in the whole market is is what I'm referring to.
Yeah, I mean, but are we, but are we pushing things up or are we trying to keep up? So that, you know, we don't, we don't miss out on workers. I mean, it's. But the, because, you know, we're, we're, we're one, we're one employer, we're a decent sized employer, but we're one employer in it in this bigger economy. And wages and bonuses and all those things are are increasing all around us. So I I mean, I, I. We, we don't want to, uh, we don't want to drive that, but I mean, we don't want to be left behind either.
So for.
Go ahead, Janice.
No, just for behavioral health, I think just operationally outside of the, um. Larger considerations, operationally, there was a large investment in behavioral health. Last legislative session, and we're struggling to deliver on that investment because we can't hire staff. So we're just in a bind, and, um, these bills really do help us recruit actively and bring staff into public settings. Obviously, my investment in that is that it's often our public entity providers who serve folks that other people in the community won't serve, so. On down the track, if we can't get staff, we can't serve folks that won't get served elsewhere, so this is. This is why we hope, uh, this is why AOC MHP is advocating for passage of the bill and why we prioritized it for our commissioners' consideration.
Okay, so. Is that a one is for, and Commissioner Devon, were you not particularly?
Oh, no, I'm not against it. I'm just laying out the, you know, the big picture from my point of view, so yeah, we could support this.
Well, yes, because tomorrow the inflation number is going to come in, and it, I mean, when Wells Fargo's starting tellers at twenty bucks an hour. You know inflation is going to be way up there, so, yeah. I mean, people are really, we know going backwards. When you know what inflation is. So, okay, so we're good with that.
I will let them know immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. So is there somebody else that's got their hand up?
If if nobody else has their hand up, Nahad had raised one. Uh, to to me earlier this morning, maybe that Eric and Tom.
Tom Kuhn might be able to address it.
Okay, good, thank you. I just wanted to make sure because Nahad, it was important to Nahad to raise it. House Bill forty fifty-two. Which had a hearing earlier in the week, and I see is scheduled for a work session on Friday, so Tom, are you able to to talk about that?
Yeah, I can. Uh, so, uh, Nahad wasn't able to stay on the call. He's is, uh, Nick alluded, he's very interested in this bill. It's basically, uh, a continuation of the bill that was, uh, going on during last session. Uh, they have two major provisions in it. One is that, uh, Oregon Health Authority provide grants to operate two culturally and linguistically specific mobile units. Uh, that was in last session. There were some issues with that because they said that. They were going to have, um, Oregon Health Authority or local public health operate those mobile units. And we felt it was better that that be made available to all different types of organizations, so that language has been changed. So that's the one, uh. Pro- major provision. The second one is to develop recommendations on how to fund robust culturally and linguistically specific interventions. Programs designed to prevent or intervene in health conditions that result in inequitable and negative outcomes. So that's another thing is developing, um, and analyzing some data and coming up with some ways. That we can, um, use that information to help, uh, combat racism and inequities in health. And so those are the major provisions of this bill. Um, it it did just have a public hearing, and then a work session is scheduled. On, um, Friday, but I don't, and I'm a little rusty. We don't provide any testimony at a work session, correct? It's just public hearings only. I didn't know if written testimony can be submitted.
I believe written testimony can be submitted until it's voted on, but, uh, in a work session, generally there's not any testimony at all. If you, there is, it's invited and you would know.
Okay. So anyways, I think that summarizes, uh, that bill, and, uh, we're recommending a priority to support.
And that's what it says on our chart.
Yes.
Actually, um, Nahad, uh, called this morning and requested that we amend that to a recommendation of a priority one support. Um, so just, I think Phil likely ran the report prior to to him requesting that update, so the board's aware.
What's the bill number?
Forty fifty-two HB.
And, uh, not to interrupt the discussion on this item, but Ryan, I wanted to just circle back and say that yesterday. The AOC Legislative Committee, um, supported HB four zero zero four, so AOC as a whole. With Deschutes County as a, as a voting member, supported that, that, that bill.
Excellent, yeah, Alex from, uh, Lane County was just wanting to, um, use the Deschutes County logo on the one pager for it.
And on, uh, the current, the current piece of legislation we're talking about, I I would support either a, of. A position, uh, priority one or priority two support, um. Stance on that, I, we, we do have, you know, we we see it in COVID, we see it in. Uh, behavioral health and other places, we have, um, we have disparities in our community. Uh, you know, based on race, language and culture, uh, in health outcomes, and this could help us, uh, address some of those.
No comment.
Okay. So. I believe we can leave it, what, as a one today, and then we'll. See if it continues to go ahead.
Well, a one says we send all of our resources in there to make sure this is the most highest priority, so I don't, I don't support changing it to a one.
Okay, you want to leave it at as two then? Yeah, I'm happy to leave it as a two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if there's any other staff that would like to flag a potential priority one or two for the board for discussion today? Nope. Okay. And Commissioner Dare, before our next update, we'll go through and, uh, do a search for any, any pending reviews and delete them out of the system, so we don't run into this technical hiccup the next time around. I apologize for that, but we're, uh, it's a valuable tool, but we have to kind of harness it in the best way possible, so we'll continue to work on that.
I know, it's never easy.
Nope.
Thank you, Whitney. Um, okay, so thank you, everyone. When is our next meeting then? Just to remind everyone.
I believe that is next Tuesday as well, at the same time, the fifteenth.
Okay, the day after Valentine's Day. Okay, perfect. And, uh, okay, we'll be good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.